All right, you guys, let's get started. I'm gonna call our regular October 7th board meeting to order. Sorry, 10th. Before we get started, I just, on behalf of the board, I want to thank leadership, faculty and staff and students for continuing on during this difficult time. I know it's a hard decision because it's not really an emergency, but it's emergency preventive. So, I just want to thank everybody that was involved in keeping student success moving forward. And I know everybody's probably had some hardships with this, so, thank you. And, uh, let's, let's get going here. So, roll call.
Okay, trustee Baldini?
Here.
Trustee Baker?
Here.
Trustee Rios?
Here.
Trustee Goff?
Here.
Trustee Dodd? Student trustee Leon?
Here.
Trustee Segura?
Here.
And trustee Iverson?
Here.
Thank you.
Pledge of allegiance. Fay, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
... Have the United States of America and two republics, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up, 2.3, adoption of the agenda. Let's go through the ropes. Do I have a motion to adopt?
No move.
Second.
Motion by trustee Baldini, second by trustee Segura. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Agenda is adopted. And, now 3.1, this is our small business development. And I believe we do have a presentation. And, uh, this is Mary Savantes from the Small Business Development Center. Mary, you wanna come up to the podium?
Okay. Okay. Let me say something. Okay, I'm gonna take the podium before Mary does, because I just want to give kudos to Mary Savantes. She has been a part of our Small Business Development Center for a long time, I'm gonna have her tell you how long, and has done some amazing work with our community, with our business advisors, and just with getting grants. She is just stellar in the work that she does, and so I'm happy to have her present to you tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I'm Mary Savantes. I've been with the Small Business Development Center for eight and a half years, will be nine years in next March. I started as the lead business advisor when the SBDC was located downtown on First Street, right across the hallway from the Napa Chamber. And then I became the director back in 2014. By that time, you know, it was just, for some of you that may remember, it was just Napa SBDC, and then in, in 2013, um, we were awarded the Sonoma County, um, region, so then we became the Napa-Sonoma SBDC. So, um, I wanted to start out with showing our workshops because, uh, our services that, that we provide, along with our one-on-one free confidential advising, are, are workshops. And we have a very robust workshop schedule. We are funded by the SBA. Uh, they're our primary funder, and then just, we're just starting our second round of state funds from the Governor's Office of Business and Economic Development, which has been a real boost for the SBDCs throughout California, because we weren't receiving state funds for a number of years, and required us to go out and raise, uh, the matching funds to our federal award, because we have to match it dollar for dollar. So, we, uh, provide, uh, trainings, and, uh, one of our shining stars is Next Level. And we started that class on, uh, the 24th of September. We have a class running here, out in our building, 3300, and then also over in Santa Rosa. Our Santa Rosa office is located with the Sonoma County Economic Development Board, so we rent an office in with that county department, and it's been a great partnership for the SBDC. And just to let you know, we've been here, Napa Valley College has been our host for over 30 years. That's a really long time. I think we're one of very few SBDCs that have been able to maintain a host for that long, and that just shows what great partnership that the SBDC has had with Napa Valley College. Our Next Level, uh, class is a very in-depth course. We end up with a higher level of client that we know will go on for funding eventually. Throughout the 11-week course, they're building a business plan and receiving one-on-one assistance with a advisor that works with them and keeps them on task. So, we're really proud of that program. We're the only SBDC in the Northern Cali- California region, which is made up of 18 centers, that offers Next Level. And it's been very successful for us. So, we have our workshops that we try to cover as many different aspects of business operations, as, as much as we can, um, because we find that some folks would rather just attend a class versus having the one-on-one assistance. So, our, we do charge a fee for our classes, but it's very, very small. And you'll also see that we provide certification training as well, uh, food safety manager's certification, as well as food handlers, to, uh, help with our restaurants here in Napa County. And also tips training as well, which is the responsible drinking, or responsible serving of alcohol. So, we have our, our workshops, and then I also, um, wanted to show the other, um, I brought a, uh, yeah, our 2000, these are our goals, this is what we accomplished in 2018. We run on a calendar year. Our funding is on a calendar year through, uh, the SBA. And we're held to, uh, our performance is based on meeting our goals, and this illustrates what we've, we're able to do in 2018. You see new business starts. We, we assisted in, in, uh, 42 businesses being established, 240 jobs created and retained, uh, over 8 million in capital infusion, so, uh, that consists of assisting, uh, folks that are expanding their business and looking for a loan. So, we help them build their loan package, uh, as well as, you know, building their sales and, um, so they can invest it back in their business. So, we devoted over 2,000, look at 2,500 hours in, uh, serving our clients. 481 clients advised. And last year, we held 140 workshops, 1,300 attendees, uh, which is pretty incredible. We are one of the, um, few worked, uh, SBDC centers that has such a full, uh, load of, of workshops, full schedule of workshops. Uh, so I, I mentioned our specialized training, our specialized programs. We just, back in, um, 2017, after the wildfires, we really, uh, put a lot of emphasis on our bilingual program and reaching out to, uh, uh, those underserved, underserved population that need our assistance. So, we've been able to partner with, um, organizations like La Luz in the Boy Springs area of Sonoma Valley. They provide services to the Latino community, uh, in Sonoma Valley, and so, uh, they also have a revolving loan fund. So, we've been able to provide a series of workshops several times a year to assist folks that want to access those funds. So, we provide startup assistance, followed by record-keeping, marketing, uh, financing your small business, and then we provide them the one-on-one assistance so that they can access, uh, that revolving loan fund. We do a lot of collaboration with our chambers. Chambers of Commerce, they like to provide value to their membership, so when we provide them workshops, uh, they're able to offer to their members, uh, for free, uh, and to help them grow their business. So, we have, we cover, you know, two counties. We have about 22 business advisors between the two counties. Not all of them want to do the one-on-one advising, some are just wanting to stick with, uh, the instruction piece. But, uh, and then we're continuing to add when we see that we need to cover some area of expertise, uh, but we have financing, marketing, QuickBooks, uh, social media, um, so a wide variety. I have also, do you have the other side, the page two of the? I wanted to feature one of the businesses that went through our Next Level class. This is Sport Kitchens, um, and, uh, Stan- Sandy Salter and her partner, um, she's a, teaches at the CIA Culinary Institute of America up in St. Helena, and also, uh, is a personal chef, and wanted to bring that community together. So, she and her partner Brad went through our Next Level training, um, back in, um, 2016, and were able to open last year their, uh, culinary kitchen, that they then rent to other chefs or, uh, other folks that are, have a specialty food product and need a, um, kitchen to prepare their, uh, food. So, they went through the course and, uh, had some funds of their own to invest, and, uh, so they were able to take their business plan and, uh, track some investors, and now have a culinary kitchen in which to share with other, um, food chefs and food-related, um, businesses. Uh, we have, I had mentioned, um, state funds that match our program. We're just getting ready to start year two, and we are receiving, our federal funds are 225,000, so, like I said, we have to match it dollar for dollar. So, uh, we've just been awarded, uh, 225,000 from the Governor's Office of Business and Economic Development, along with an extra 50,000, so 275 total. That extra 50 is so that we can provide one-on-one assistance, uh, for, uh, businesses that are looking for financing. So, it's, each grant is, has, you know, specific, um, uh, they have restrictions, but specific goals that we have to meet. Um, and then, I was just recently awarded, from Wells Fargo, a little mini $10,000 grant, which will help us in our outreach efforts to businesses around Calistoga, um, that, and around, uh, the areas of Santa Rosa, and, uh, Guernville that have been impacted by recent disasters. Not only the wildfires, but the floods, um, in Guernville and Sebastopol really impacted quite a few businesses that still hadn't recovered from the wildfires, because they depend so heavily on tourists. So, um, when we receive funding through a bank, it, uh, gives us a little, they're less restrictive, so we can use it for, um, you know, more outreach and, uh, and areas that our, our grants don't really cover. So, um, that's pretty much the SBDC. Does anybody have any questions?
No questions. I have, uh, just a comment. I, thank you for coming in and making the presentation. I think this is really important. This is one of the, uh, I think, more, most important of, we have a lot of important partnerships, but I think this really affects our, our community and, and, you know, the economic viability of our community, and, um, being an attorney who works with a lot of small businesses, I have a lot of people who come in and sometimes can't afford, you know, my service, and I've actually been, uh, referring people, uh, to the SBDC. And, um, have found that, you know, there's, there's a lot of value in what you're doing. And wanted, I was hoping that everybody, you know, understood what you do, and because there's a limited kind of marketing and, and promotion of what you do, I thought it'd be great for everybody, if they don't already know, to understand what, what you're doing so that, um, we all know, and we can tell other people what it is you're doing, to allow people to, to take advantage of these services.
Great, and, and thank you for that. And should you come across, um, someone that you feel could use our services, just drive them to our website to request services, and, and we get back to them with, um, within 24 hours when we see that, um, they're, they're, uh, seeking SBDC. So, uh, thank you for that. We don't have the marketing budget that some other, you know, organizations may have due to our restrictive grant funds, so we like to rely on word of mouth quite a bit.
Just one question. Do you find that, that, um, being on campus works much better for you than, than being downtown or by the Chamber of Commerce or anything like that?
Well, you know what? When we first made the move, we felt there was going to be, you know, less, of course, less walk-in traffic, because being downtown, we were right across from City Hall, and that's where folks go to get their business license, and so the finance department would send people across the street if they needed any, um, type of assistance with their business license or something. But it's really worked out well. I mean, we have good turnouts for our workshops, um, so it, it, it just took a while to, um, for that change, and, and for where to get out and people to get more comfortable of coming out to the campus. Wonderful. Thank you. Okay.
Anyone else?
All right.
I'll make a shout-out, uh, but thank you. A couple of family members have utilized the services offered by the Small Business Development and are on a successful track, so I, I thank you. It is word of mouth, but, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
I had just one question, question more out of curiosity, I guess, but, do we do outreach with the high school?
Yes, we do. Uh, every year, we have a, hold a business plan competition, so, uh, business advisors go into the classroom and work with students, uh, one-on-one, and help them with their presentation. Um, so that's been every year for the past, I think, going on maybe 15 years. Yeah.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Well, thank you so much for coming in, and I definitely learned a lot.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Uh, next is, public comment on closed session. This is 4.1. Uh, at this time, the board will devote a total up to 15 minutes for comments to the Board of Trustees regarding closed session agenda items. Individuals will be limited to a five-minute presentation. This evening, we have 5.1, Conference with Labor Negotiators, and 5.2, Public Employment. Do I have anyone wishing to speak? Bob, one? All right. Uh, I'm gonna open and close public comment for closed session, and we will return approximately around 5:30. Oh, had a few. Thank you, thank you. Back at 5:37. This is 6.1, Announcement from Items from Closed Session. The Board has approved the employment of Robin DeCarn- DeCarnjalo? I botched it, I'm sorry, I had it. Thank you, Oscar. As a senior dean, Student Affairs, uh, the initial contract start date is to be determined. Uh, initial contract end date, June 30th, 2020. Step placement on the schedule, this would be for Range 19, step C on the administrative confidential salary. Robin, if you're out there listening, I apologize for botching your last name. Uh, all right. Public Comment General, 7.1. This public comment opportunity is governed by the State of California Brown Act. By definition, this is an opportunity to listen to concerns, perspectives, and differing vantage points. The Board is not able, under the Brown Act, to engage in any level of conversation or discussion, but we look forward to this opportunity to listen to community input. At this point, the Board will devote a total of up to 15 minutes for comments to the Board of Trustees regarding any subject not appearing as an agenda item for this meeting, but over which the Board has jurisdiction. The public may ask the Board to place an item related to the business of the district on a future Board agenda. No action or discussion will occur at this time on such items. Individuals will be limited to a five-minute presentation. And I do have a few speakers. Christina Goodman. Welcome.
Five minutes, yikes. Okay, so, I don't think I'm gonna get through the whole thing, but I'll try to get through what I can. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. My name is Christina Goodman. I'm a student here at Napa Valley College, and I've been here before to speak to you about parking citations appeals process. I'm here to provide an update. On January 29th of this year, I received a parking citation in the lot closest to the Trefethan Classroom on the south side of campus. I had budgeted enough time to walk, parked, walk to the parking permit machine, buy a permit, walk to my car, and then to class. Unfortunately, the parking permit machine was not functional. I did attempt to pay for the space, though. I did not have enough time to search for functional machines. Our instructor had scolded the class the week before about being late. I took a picture of the error message on the screen before I headed to class. I called the campus police. After I got out of class, I was wrongly told that the ticket was valid. The student standing next to me asked what did they say? I told her, "They said we can contest it," and I planned to do so. From the beginning, I intended to get this dismissed. I set out during the appeals process to answer two questions. One, if an organization requires payment for parking, are they not responsible for maintaining their equipment so that payment can be processed? And two, can police officers ticket you for something that is not illegal? On September 28th, 2017, the California State Legislature answered question number one by approving an amendment to Vehicle Code 22508.5, Assembly Bill Number 1625, Chapter 352. Here's an excerpt. "A vehicle may park without time limit in any parking space that does not have a posted time limit and that is regulated by an inoperable parking meter or inoperable parking payment center. An inoperable parking payment center means an electronic parking meter or pay station serving one or more parking spaces that is closest to the space where a person has parked and that cannot accept payment in any form, cannot register that a payment in any form has been made, or cannot issue, issue a receipt that is required to be displayed in a conspicuous location on or in the vehicle. The bill passed unopposed. Republicans, Democrats, Independents, all voted for it. Variations of this bill have been in place since 2012. The bill passed in 2017. May this legislation permanent and superseded any local ordinance. This amendment went into effect January 1st, 2018, more than a year before I received my citation. On a news clip, a state legislator stated in an interview that they wanted to provide incentive to maintain the parking meters. There is little incentive to maintain the equipment without that legislation, because you can make way more money writing citations than collecting the $2 daily permit fees. Hello, entrapment. The citation I was issued is unlawful. Before I answer question number two, there are some other points I'd like to make. In 2014, Cody Weiss sued the City of Los Angeles over a parking ticket. Los Angeles had contracted out their parking enforcement to a private company, a subsidiary of Xerox. Does this sound familiar? It should. Replace City of Los Angeles with Napa Valley College, and replace Xerox with P-Ticket. Mr. Weiss and his legal team successfully argued that a private company had no legal right to determine guilt or innocence. All these parking companies are allowed to do is process payments. The Superior Court Judge agreed, signing a law passed in 1995. The Second Circuit Court of Appeals upheld this decision August 8th, 2016. This following, the following is an excerpt from NBC4 Los Angeles Television Station Report. "The court found a problem with the fact that the initial review was handled by a company called PRWT, a subcontractor for Xerox. An investigation by NBC4 found that PRT automatically denied most ticket appeals, even when strong evidence was presented that someone was wrongly ticketed. I left photocopies of reviews of P-Ticket in April for you to look at. People mentioned that they were hit with late fees after P-Ticket said they never received the appeals. I expressed concern to you in April about outsourcing law enforcement duties to for-profit companies. I also briefly mentioned private prisons. One of the differences between the private prisons and the parking enforcement companies is that the private prison is not making any presumptions of guilt or innocence. The parking companies do not have judiciar- judici- judiciary privileges. The private company kept 75% of revenues from parking tickets, and Los Angeles stood to make about $20 from Mr. Weiss. Instead, they were ordered to pay him $721,995." Weiss versus Los Angeles. Also, C. Sor McCon versus Los Angeles. Los Angeles had an opportunity to correct the way they handle parking ticket processing earlier, since they were hit with a class-action lawsuit in 2012. The lead plaintiff for that suit was Jeff Galfer, G-A-L-F-E-R. That was settled out of court. Ladies and gentlemen, it has been illegal for a private company to process initial reviews for the last 23 years. The first part of the appeal is to submit a letter or online explanation of why the ticket is not valid for the initial review. The Vehicle Code 40215 lays out the process. For Section A, they give an option to file for an initial review by telephone, in writing, or in person. In person. The state legislature is assuming that you are at the issuing agency, AKA the Police Department. You cannot actually make this request in person if you get a ticket at Napa Valley College. It has been outsourced to a company in San Jose who has no listed physical location, just a PO box. I made it very clear in my initial review letter that the parking payment machine was broken, and I had a picture proving it. How is it that a company that specializes in parking doesn't know the parking laws? Surely, they must be aware of the broken parking machine law. The industry group that represents companies like P-Ticket lobbied to kill the bill. Next, you have to pay the $45 in order to proceed to the next barrier to justice, the administrative hearing. In 2015, the Judicial Council, which is the policymaking body for California's court system, decided it was an infringement on our constitutional right to due process to make people pay before being convicted. It took about four months, from the time I paid to the time I got in front of a judge. So, you lose the ability to use that property in the meantime. The parking ticket is considered a civil matter, so I'm still looking into whether it's legal to make us pay in advance. The fact that I had already paid played a role at my civil hearing. The next up is the administrative hearing. The Vehicle Code suggests that hearing officers be sourced from the American Arbitration Center. However, I found a job posting and an advertisement for a seminar that was disturbing. So, there was an ad to take an eight-hour course to conduct Level 2 administrative hearings organized by an attorney with the California Public Parking Association. Then, I find a job posting by Data Ticket, the parking enforcement company that handles parking for Sonoma State, among others. Their top requirement is an eight-hour training certificate from the California Public Parking Association. The California Public Parking Association is the industry slash lobbyist group that represents companies like P-Ticket. This is the same industry slash lobbyist group that tries to kill legislation favorable to drivers. Does anyone else here see a conflict of interest? I thought the administrative hearing was a waste of time and gas money before I found out the lobbying groups were training hearing officers, so this is even worse. out the lobbying groups were training hearing officers, so this is even worse. So I met with George Vane for my administrative hearing. I find it hard to believe that someone who specializes in hearing about parking doesn't know of the broken parking meter law. I showed him the picture I had of the error message on the screen. I'd also like to formally complain that this man touched my property without my permission. I pay Napa Valley College for a service. I receive no financial aid, so I pay full price. That service is to be educated in a certain subject. It was the position of the hearing officer that I should forfeit some of the service I pay for to look for a functioning machine. I maintain that I should not have to lose attendance points and get lower grades because of inoperable machines, so that NBC can have $2. This is contradictory to the vision statement of the board. More importantly, the law does not require me to do so. I got a five-word denial of my appeal after the administrative hearing. Photo proves citation is valid, except it was never valid from the start. There is an address to appeal to Superior Court, however, the address has a typo and it's also the wrong building. I was sent to 111 Third Street rather than 1,111 Third Street. After waiting in the security line and the line at the Traffic Court Department, I was told I had to go to 826 Brown Street. I didn't understand why, but I did. After two security lines and several other lines at three different offices, I was able to file my paperwork and pay $25 to contest a $45 ticket. Why is it that a company that specializes in parking doesn't know that this is a civil matter? Are they sending people to the wrong building on purpose to wear justice seekers down? On June 3rd, I had my court date. I wasn't on the docket, so I went to the traffic department and waited in line to confirm I was scheduled. I was actually surprised to see Napa Valley College send out two people to defend the unlawful citation. The dispatcher, Jasmine De La Cruz, and the ticketing officer, Esmeralda Curio. This is the first traffic case I have seen where the dispatcher gives the bulk of the testimony. I went first to testify. I laid out what happened and the bill and the amendment which allowed for parking at the broken meter. The judge asked if I was an attorney. When it was confirmed that I was not, the jur- judge ignored the law. As you can see, I'm not black, so it never even occurred to me that a judge would just ignore the law. This particular judge has a reputation for that. Normally, she hears family law cases. On this day, she was hearing traffic cases. Therobingroom.com is like Yelp for judges. You can review all the Napa judges there. It was brought up that no other students have complained about parking at Napa Valley College, but you have to go through a lot to make it through the rigged system. The dispatcher gave some misleading testimony about the maintenance of the parking machines. Later, the officer gave contradictory testimony about machines being so old and outdated that a decision had been made to stop investing in them. A decision was made to remove the machine instead of continuing to invest in it. There are clues to just how outdated the machines were. There was an illustration of a $1 coin on the machine as acceptable payment. The Sacagawea $1 coin was first pressed in 1999 with an issue date of 2000. These machines were probably installed around that time, two decades ago. The dispatcher kept talking about a deal in a letter. The letter was handed to the judge. I was asked about the letter and the deal, and I couldn't remember what that was about or why I would reject the deal. I believe this was a procedural error because it was not shown, I was not shown the letter to confirm its authenticity. After the hearing, I found my copy. They were referring to essentially a plea bargain I was sent after the initial review. I am not interested in a plea bargain. I wanted the whole thing dismissed since no law was broken. I also believe the neglect of the parking machines needed to be pursued. When the dispatcher and officer realized that the judge was not going to rule against me, or was going to rule against me, they couldn't be professional and contain their delight. Unfortunately for them, I have an electronic recording of the hearing, which I plan to play for reporters when I have more time.
Christina?
Yes.
I've given you over the five minutes. How much more?
Yes, thank you so much.
How much more do you have, though?
Page and a half.
Okay. Can you try and summarize it a little bit, if you can?
Yes. So, the judge was gonna reduce my fines, but since I already paid the $45, it was too much trouble, it was too inconvenient, so she basically said you should have taken the plea bargain. The lady that went before me, she was accused of speeding. That officer didn't show up, so that I got dismissed. The college sent two people to block my appeal when I tried to correct this error that was made.
I'm sorry you've had to go through. I do have to applaud your research and everything that you've done, and normally, we don't comment, but I just wanted to let you know that this is something that's on the future agenda items. I anticipate discussion on it, possibly this evening from Chief Wade, so maybe you would like to stick around. But, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you know about what time that will be?
If we keep moving along, I hope, depends on my academic senate and everybody, but I would, maybe an hour, that, maybe less. I did get your email. I'm sorry, it's not in my, I don't normally respond, but maybe a half hour. But, all right. Academic senate report, Dr. Eileen Tahada.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. You're going to the podium.
Your mouse works. Excuse me?
Yeah, your mouse works. Mine, I can also help you with my mouse.
Okay. But we can, all right, thank you. So, last time, when I was here, we spoke about, you requested, knowing the concerns for the acad- that the academic senate, that the faculty have with the housing project. And so today, I am here to report back the findings of that survey. So, first of all, I really want to make clear that the Napa Valley College faculty are very concerned about our students. In fact, we are very aware of the struggles and obstacles that our students face because we're the ones that have to deal with those struggles and obstacles in our classes as they try, as students try to successfully complete our courses. So it is from this intention that we share our concerns with the housing project. Indeed, the idea of housing is not a new one on this campus. In the late 1990s, an idea for campus housing for new faculty was kind of explored and bounced around because we started to notice that newly hired faculty weren't unable to live in Napa County because they couldn't afford the rents on, so. And at that time, I remember that we wondered what would be the long-term impact on both new faculty and our students as we watched the housing market increase in price. So, faculty do support doing something to address the housing crisis. We are very interested in exploring solutions. And there were, in the survey, there was a few folks that mentioned, is this the best way to address the housing crisis? So, what I bring before you today is some of the themes that emerged from that survey. So, we did two questions. The first question, what are your concerns about the housing development project? There were 62 responses, 58 concerns that fall into the following themes. The financial liability to the college is the, was the, the most, that's the, I would say, the lion's share of the concern rested with liability to the college, including the unseen obligation that occurs after the 30 years. The other is investing in this project. Why are we investing in this project when the data shows declining enrollment? How, what's the thinking there? The, the issue of rental cost. Now, in terms of what students have shared with us, is that they're expecting the rents to be $600. And when we read the, the developers' report and those kinds of analysis, the developer says that the rents are set 20% below market value price. So how are we going to inform the students that are thinking that we're, they're gonna have housing for $600 when in fact, it might be more, significantly more than that? So that's a commun- a communication problem. The other concerns were, who are the investors and what happens if these investors go bankrupt? And I think that, again, addressing this concern about how, how safe is this, is this financial investment? Another concern was, we need real improvements in campus facilities, so why are we invest- investing in apartments? What are the additional costs in staffing and public safety? Will crime increase on campus? And will this project exacerbate problems with parking? So these were, these were, again, the, the themes that, that came across in, in the first question of the survey. The second question, because I did get some, some faculty that said that they actually do support the, the project. And so I wanted to hear, well, those of you that are supporting, why, why do you support it? And can you share that with us as well? So, this question, 54 faculty answered it. 20 faculty wrote on the survey, "We do not support." But 34 faculty had reasons that they would support. And one is, again, we have students who are homeless, and we're really worried about how do we get these students into more secure housing? And then, to address the housing crisis and the belief that the Napa Valley College will be enriched by this project, by having residents, student residents. So, thank you. That, I want to just kind of end by asking, or maybe suggesting, some next steps. These, you asked, what are the concerns? These are the concerns that faculty have. I get the feeling, as we discussed this in the senate, that if these concerns are answered, that then the faculty will feel more, will feel better about publishing a position on this project through a resolution, which is what the senate does. And so, as, I've been in conversation with Dr. Kraft about these concerns, and we're trying to see if it's amenable to maybe a few of you to come and talk to the faculty, address these concerns in maybe some conversation venues, and then more formally to the senate as a whole. So thank you so very much for allowing me to gather this information for you and sharing it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Tahada. 8.2 Administrative Confidential Senate Report, Mr. Bob Harris.
Thank you, and good evening, Board of Trustees. The Administrative Senate has meets on a monthly basis and will be meeting again next month. And at our last meeting, we sort of came to a resolution or a commitment. Our group has really functioned sort of informally over the years, and we're gonna try to, we're making a commitment to beef up our bylaws and processes so that we ensure that as more and more administrators are on campus, more and more administrators are involved in processes on, on campus. It seems quite often that many of us are, are on committees and stuff by the virtue of our role as an administrator, and many folks get looked over, passed over in various committee or opportunities. So our, our goal is to try to put together some language in our bylaws that will enable folks to participate and have more opportunities in various processes on campus to engage more and more administrators and confidential employees in the various activities on campus, committees, et cetera. And outside of that, that's my report. Nothing further.
Thank you. Associated Student and Napa Valley College Report, 8.3, Mr. Christopher Hernandez.
Thank you. For this BOT meeting, I would just like to provide a list of the ASNBC accomplishments and ongoing projects for the semester. ASNBC hosted Constitution Day, Constitution Day mandated by the State of California on September 17th, and endorsed a voter registration booth from the League of Woman Voters. The ASNBC Board, in particular, Senator Large Francesca Makhia advocated and successfully got a campus ballot box passed here by the Napa County Board of Supervisors. The ASNBC Board just approved the minutes for the first three meetings, and we are working on getting those minutes and agenda posted online on Board Dogs. ASNBC passed an undocumented student week of action initiative. This was recommended by the Student Senate for California Community Colleges. The purpose of this table is to raise awareness of services for undocumented students. ASNBC will be attending the California Community College Student Affairs Association Conference, or also known as the CSOW Conference. Not only that, but for the first time ever, ASNBC will be leading the icebreakers for this conference, and so will be initiating the first day of the conference and leading all of the community colleges in California. ASNBC is working with the Classified Senate on a Halloween event, and we just passed the budget for this event yesterday. ASNBC is planning a multicultural event that'll take place in the spring semester. ASNBC is working on an inter-club council proposal to incorporate inter-club council into ASNBC, and to formally do that, we want to do, put it on, make a special election for that. ASNBC is working on our evaluation for the board, our stipends and the amount of, our stipend for each ASNBC members, and we're working on our bylaws. ASNBC is work, working on a space utilization project with Matt Christensen, and we are actually working to schedule some times that the ASNBC Board is available to receive a presentation about space utilization. We now have reps for the majority of the district committees on campus. At the very least, the committees that have contacted ASNBC members via email, those committees have student representation. For the year, ASNBC's on track, but I also wanted to give, report some concerns about the power out, the PG&E power outage. A lot of students came up to me, and they were pretty upset that Napa, Napa Valley College is the only campus that's open during the power outage, and a lot of, a lot of professors canceled classes, and only some professors accommodated with some students and stuff like that. So, they're just, they're just really upset about that. And another thing is that the alternative to not having power outage at, at their house is to come to school and do their work here, but they're unable to do that when there's low Wi-Fi connection, and they're not able to, to connect to their, their computers, to, to the Wi-Fi on campus and, and do their assignments. Some professors also had some concerns about that, too, because they're not able to lecture, and well, students have to go home for that. So, I just wanted to raise awareness about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Classified Association Report, I do not see Valerie Moll, but I do see Dixie Larson.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm filling in for Valerie today. My name is Dixie Larson, and I don't have anything to report, I'm just here to take notes for her. Thank you.
Thank you. Classified Senate Report, Mr.
Yeah, we're gonna keep it short, you know, expedite things, and yeah, we're kind of happy to be able to be affiliated with the students and celebrate Halloween. Please participate, you know, be juvenile. Okay.
Will you be dressing up?
No, no. I'm gonna wear my everyday costume.
Well, thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Faculty Association Report, Ms. Kristi Omoto.
Good evening, everybody. We not met for negotiations, we'll be meeting again on October 22nd. I, I share my student colleague's concerns about the response to- I, I share my student colleague's concerns about the response to the blackouts. Actually, that was a, a pretty big topic in our Faculty Association meeting today. And so I was asked to, to talk about that a little bit. I personally had, out of a, out of my class yesterday, I had one-third of my class missing. I had students emailing me saying that they're scared to drive with all the streetlights out, because some of them just got their licenses a year or two years ago. I had some students who, you know, felt embarrassed because they, they said, you know, well, our, our lights are off and I, you know, wasn't able to, to get ready in time. And I, I don't want to just come, you know, I didn't get to do laundry, and so I can't come. I had students who said, "I had 20 hours to find childcare, and I didn't." Because I have, I have kids who are at, at Napa Unified. We got word at 3:00 PM that Napa Unified was closing everything. And so that gave our students, and as well as our classified staff and our faculty, very little time to find childcare. And so those were some of my concerns. And, you know, when I have a, a class where one-third of my students are not there, that gives me a dilemma with, you know, with finals and with research projects to say, "Well, do I leave those students behind who missed that class? Or do I just say, 'Oh, sorry, people who came, but we're kind of just going to do an adjusted class today to make up for the fact that so many people are gone.'" That I'm either disrespecting the students who came or disrespecting the students who had to stay home. I, I have a colleague who, who wrote a letter to Dr. Kraft, which I'm sure he's seen already. And, and I did see your response. I do want to thank you for sending a response to the entire campus. But she did ask that I read this, this letter. So it says, "Dear President Kraft, I am writing with my concern about the way this college consistently seems to mishandle crises and potential crises. I realize we had power, and so the decision was that we would open and operate assuming a business-as-usual mentality. However, just because we can remain open doesn't mean we should. I would argue that as a community college, an institution that serves and represents community, compassion should be the guiding value for decision-making. Rather than compelling students, faculty, and staff to attend regardless of whether it's safe to get here with traffic lights out and roads congested, the compassionate response would have been to cancel classes at all sites, but to keep the campus open for community to come and use facilities, to charge devices, to get food, to use microwaves. It seems especially ironic that Napa Valley College makes a particular effort to schedule classes to avoid the inconvenience of a rock concert, but not to preserve people's safety and well-being in the event of a power outage, especially given that Napa Unified has closed, as have Santa Rosa J.C., which, like Napa Valley College, has power, and Solano Community College, in fact, seemingly all schools within a 60-mile radius. I'm also saddened by the fact that this decision did not come as a surprise. It shows a pattern of thinking based on expedience rather than compassion, which I find deeply disheartening. I did not cancel classes or meetings. I did extend to my students the respect and compassion that were not extended to me, letting students know that I would be holding class, but urging them to only come if they felt safe to do so, and that I was extending deadlines for homework due today until next week. For my part, I have felt deeply uneasy each day, exacerbated by the sense that my concerns are not respected or even acknowledged. I wonder at how disconnected the leadership is from the community it professes to include and represent. The decision-making at least seems to have been done in a vacuum. Faculty leadership was consulted only after the decision was already made. In addition, we haven't seen our leaders anywhere on campus. I wish I could say that I'm writing this with hope for a change, but I have no such hope or expectation." And that just sort of, to me, exemplifies the sort of low morale that I'm seeing around campus. And I think it's, it's sort of compounding. It's, it was the Nappa fires. And, you know, and then, and the response, albeit I understood that the response was sort of, catch as catch can as we go, you know, because we didn't know what was happening. People felt that it was unfair for us to have opened last year during the campfire when the air quality was terrible. A lot of our other colleges and, and the K-12s closed during that week, but we alone stayed open during that time as well. So our students were breathing in the bad air. And then this, this as well. And I think that is part of what contributes to the low morale that some of our faculty and staff feel. So I, I just wanted to bring those concerns forward to you and just ask that in decision-making in the future, that be considered. That is my report.
Thank you, Kristi. I began the meeting addressing the hardship, and this is a hardship. I, I'm hoping that this isn't a new norm that we're all going to have to be dealing with. But it's a very difficult decision, and I think it's going to be one that we're going to have to all learn together with. And it's one of those ones where it's really hard to please everybody all the time. But all we can do is our best, and hopefully we don't have to do it again in the next few months. But there's no promises. So thank you for addressing it, both ASNVC and Kristi. So, next is Dr. Kraft in our President's Report.
Good timing. Thank you, Kristi, right, for the, for the cue-up. I will, we have a couple of things on, on mine. One, I wanted to talk a little bit about the fires and, and, I'm sorry, and the, the history of the fires. And then talk about these rolling blackouts, is what PG&E is starting to call them. It's going to, it is a new norm. So when we talked with the, with the county, and I, and we spoke with PG&E, their expectation is this will continue. So if, if humidity levels are low, not this event, in the future, if humidity levels are low or extremely low, or winds are high or extremely high, or any combination of those things, then they intend on adjusting the power grid. And that could be localized, as it was with this one, where 30% of the population was affected. It could be broad-based. It could be across the county. So as I sent out today, and thank you, Kristi, for, I'm not sure I'm, thank you for reading it, but yes. It, it was good. And, and I did receive several and wanted to get back out to people. You know, leadership is difficult, but we're, we're in this position to, to do the best for the most. And so I'm, I'm doing what I believe to be correct. The, the future here is, I think, important to look at. We're going to have other incidences of this, this season. That there, that's what PG&E is, is saying. So that means that I've got it with an eye for academics and student success. We have to be very careful we don't reduce our classes to a place where a student is at risk of not being able to get enough, enough time in a class, which was one of the cases this week with, and we talked about it today with Eileen a bit, with one of the, one of the classes had one meeting this week, and it happened to be in, in a, in the last couple of days. They have midterms coming up. There's hardships out there, if, if you cancel. And there's certainly hardships if you don't. So we've got to come up with some protocols on, not emergencies. We, we're pretty solid on what to do in emergency situations. We have a pretty solid protocol on that. Having an institution where we're dealing primarily with adults who have choices is different than the K-12. And, you know, I understand that. But I'm with you. You know, my, my water doesn't work sewer or electricity. So we're basically, you know, batching it as, as well. So it is a, an ongoing issue. I'm reaching out to faculty, staff, and administrators to start next week. We need to get together to see whether we can figure out jointly what our protocol might be for, as PG&E said, they're, they're going to have brownouts, blackouts, and shutdowns. And those are going to affect different areas as we go forward. They said it's going to be the new norm. So we have to have something in play, so it feels solid, people can understand. And I appreciate the, the comments here tonight especially. So we'll work forward with those. A second piece that I wanted to deal with was the, I asked Amber to come in to talk about the parking citation issue, to give the Board a, a brief update. We talked about this last time in terms of the Board. I thought it would be appropriate under the President's Report, and I'm glad that you're here. It's, it's not, you didn't have to wait half an hour, so it's even better. So Amber, if you can come on up and, and just walk us through for the Board. Board, this is a, an agendized item, so you can engage. We will also post any, any information that we have that's written later, but right now there is nothing. So.
Can I bring up our college website?
Do you need, now I have my notes. Heather, would that help? Or you want to go to the?
Oh, I, I can do everything with the website.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Show you our, our protocols and everything.
Okay, good.
And just to let you know, I also have Jasmine De La Cruz. She's our dispatcher and office manager. So she deals with a lot of appeals and, and knows our parking process front and back. So I might refer to her if I cannot answer any questions. So just to start, let me bring up our website here. I can walk you through our basic parking protocols. And I'll also address the, the companies we have contracts with. Yeah, I wanted to just go to our police website here. So when you go to our police website, it's pretty obvious there's our parking information. So we have three ways to, to purchase a parking permit. You can purchase from our daily parking machines. We did have six parking machines on campus. We are reducing it, and we plan to go almost fully digital with our parking process. We will leave one machine on campus to allow people that aren't willing to do the digital permits. And that machine will take dollar bills, coins, and also credit cards. So that is something we have added, because that was a big issue in the past, was our students didn't have cash on them, and our visitors as well. So we needed to get that, that credit card reader. So you can purchase a permit at our daily parking machines. You can also purchase a semester parking permit online. And we have a contract with Park Mobile. So if you, any of you have parked in cities, a lot of them have the Park Mobile app. And you just need to put the, the parking zone in there, and you can, you can pay for your parking permit that way. The reason we went with Park Mobile, it gives our students and visitors that option. If they forget to get a parking permit, they can do it from their phone in class, walking to and from, and that sort of thing. So it really did accommodate our students on campus. So that's how you, you purchase parking permits on campus. If you do receive a parking ticket. So over here, we have parking information. There's order of student permit. Everything's up there on our website. That is when parking permits are mandatory on campus. We do not enforce parking on holidays and weekends.
Amber, how much are the tickets for, for if you don't park with a permit?
So it's $2 to park on our campus for the day. If you get a ticket, it's $45. That is general, that's if you don't have a permit. So if you park in handicap, there's, there's different fines for that. And that's set by the vehicle code. And then also our parking permits and how much we charge is, is it 30? For summer? Okay, so it's, yeah, 32 for a semester permit. And then $20 for a bog, if you have a bog waiver. And then we also reduce our price for summer semester for $14. So it's $14 to park on campus for summer semester. Sorry, 16. So, to, since we're going on the, the cost of permits, I believe you mentioned a deal that we offer our students. Our goal with parking is for compliance. We don't want to punish people for it. And so when people do not have a permit on campus and they get a parking citation, we would offer them, and they appeal it to us, we would offer them a deal. This would be to pay a $2 processing fee and show us proof of a semester permit. So together, that's $34, and they have a semester permit for the rest of their semester. Cheaper than a ticket, and again, they have their semester permit. So we would do that as a, a way so our students and visitors would not have to pay that $45. We were having some issues, and so we have made some changes to that, because in order to do that, they would have to pay the $2, show us proof of that, and show us proof of their semester permit. That was becoming an issue because students weren't coming in and showing us the proof of that. So we've tried to make it even easier. We've since changed that. This is our first semester of, of making this switch. So if you get a parking ticket on our campus and appeal it to us, we will give you a deal of paying $4. $4, and then you're done. So you don't have to, to pay that parking ticket. That's a one-time thing. And we wanted to give people that option, even though we have posted signs. We try and get the word out there, but maybe something happens. So that's another way of giving our students and visitors a break. It also allows people that are coming onto our campus that aren't going to be coming back on a campus, they don't have to purchase a semester permit. So we have a lot of swim parents and other, other people visiting our campus, and to tell them to purchase a semester permit was, was getting a little extreme on that. Okay. I want to address the companies that we, we contract with. So TurboData is P-Ticket, as, as I talked about earlier. They do all of our processing. So when a person gets a ticket, we, you want, yeah. We have Jasmine trying to explain this a little better to you.
Okay. So when a person receives a citation, they have two options, pay the citation or contest it. All that information is also on our website. P-Ticket is the website that TurboData uses to process that into their system. We use TurboData. They do all our processing. They send out our letters and our payments. They do not make our decisions. That actually goes through our department, and it goes through a process as well. When they receive a citation, they have 21 days from the date of the citation to contest it. Okay? Once they go on the website, contest, they put a stop in it. They will receive a letter in the mail. On top of that, they add 15 more days to either comply with what, either you get the deal dismissal or not dismissal. Or you do the second appeal. So if a student decides to contest it, they get, they would get the $2 deal. They have on top of that extra days to come in. Back then, the $2 deal, now, now it's $4. They have on top of that 15 more days to do what the deal says, or if it's past a certain amount of days, depending on when they contest it. Some people contest it the last day, so then they have an extra 15 days. Some people do it right away, and they process it, and everything goes by quickly. So after that's done, if they do not comply, then they do have to pay the extra fees, and DMV actually puts a hold on their registration. So DMV puts a hold on the registration. They cannot renew their registration. That is something that DMV does put on the citations, as well as a delinquent be. So that's one option. Second option is if you do not agree, you don't want to pay the, well, it was back then the $2, $2 deal, and now it's the $4, you can do a second appeal. All that information as well is on the citation on our website, as well as on the two letters that they receive. Once you receive a citation, you get an initial letter reminding you, hey, you have a citation. These are your options. Or you appealed it, you don't agree with it, you can do the second appeal. They do require you to post the penalty first. You will see George Vien, who is our arbitrator. We do contract him out. He's been doing this for over 25 years, multiple schools and counties. So he comes every other month. We do have scheduled him on, it's every first Wednesday of every other month. 11 o'clock, first come, first served, and he's here until all the students that he sees, whether it's written or in person. They do have those options. So, yeah, they have that option, and.
Just so you know too, George Vien is not associated with TurboData at all. We do have a contract with him, and he's paid by the hour. So a lot of the, the appeals that he hears, we do not even know about it unless there's something that we need to change or process. So he isn't, we, we think it's very important to have that third party, so there's no bias on the college or the person that's processing our information, our letters, and our, our parking tickets.
Yes, so then you have that other option to go to George Vien. He will hear you out. We don't talk to him. We give him the file, which they sent to TurboData with their proof, their pictures, their statements. I give him the file, and then when he's done, he gives it back to me. We will answer some questions if he says, "Hey, can you drive me?" We will answer some questions. If he says, hey, can you drive me to this parking meter? I want to look at it. So we will drive him there. He personally looks at it. All parking meters have our phone number. It has the 7777 number, which is directed to the officer's cell phone if there's nobody in the office. We're very prompt. We will go there and help you with the machine. If the machine is broken, we will give you a daily for that day. Or we'll fix it for you, help you out, whatever. We are there. There is multiple, there was, at the time that she got the citation, three machines on that side. Like she said, now they've been removed. But that is our process. If they do not agree with what George Vien's outcome is to their appeal, then they do have the option to take us to small claims court. We go there. I was there myself. She gave her speech, and then I basically just gave her all the letters that we had. Same thing we give George Vien. I gave the judge, so. But those are, those are the people that we use is Turbo Data. They use P-Ticket to process all the information. George Vien, and our LPR, which is the ones that read the license plates. That's who we use for our tickets.
Trying to think if there were any other things. Are there any questions of issues that came up earlier that you'd like for us to address?
I just, I'm still trying to understand the process of making an appeal, because the third-party part is confusing to me. So you're sending the information to P-Ticket, but it's actually an appeal with the college?
So the P-Ticket does all of our processing. So the appeals are made online. If people are unable to do them online, they can come into our department. We have a tablet, and we can walk them through that process. So they get that information, and they send that to us. We then have a template, and we can go through and decide, okay, there was a mistake made. This ticket's going to be waived in the interest of justice, or we have options is what we do. So we then make that decision, whether we're going to grant that, offer a deal, or say, no, you need to pay the full fine. We then send that to P-Ticket, and they, or sorry, Turbo Data, same company. And they send out all of our letters for us. They also allow, because one of the options we give is a payment process. So if you cannot pay your ticket all at once, you can go through this process, and they'll give you a different way of paying for the ticket. I'm going blank on what. Sorry, a payment plan for that, so they do that as well. They do not make any decisions for us.
They just gather the information?
Send out the letters. And, and so the way we do parking enforcement is license plate readers, and that's how everything is digital, and that's why it's immediate. So if people purchase a semester permit, or they go through Park Mobile and do it for the day, it's automatic. It's uploaded into our license plate readers. So it works fast, and again, everything in this world is going more and more digital, and so we try and accommodate our students that way.
Miss Wender, you know, with the specific, to the person who spoke earlier. It didn't sound like, at any point, she was actually talking to anyone at NBC. It sounded like she was getting...
I believe she, she did contact P-Ticket. I don't believe I have ever spoken to you. I did send you an email.
I submitted a snail mail, a certifying mail, to P-Ticket. The vehicle code does state that you can do everything in person. Which is not immediately clear when you get a ticket here.
Yeah, all of our tickets and our letters have Napa Valley College on there, so.
P.O. Box, San Jose.
Yeah, and it, the phone number is P-Ticket, because it's for processing questions. They are instructed to refer people to us for any actual questions, other than processing.
I have a copy of the bill, the vehicle code, that I'll leave with you guys.
Anyone else from the board? Sure.
So, so this comes down to, if I was going to go and purchase a parking ticket, and the machine was broken.
Yes.
It clearly states on there that, here's what you do if it's broken. You call this number.
Yes.
The phone number was missing from that machine.
So that's where we break down, right there, right? That's the whole...
It was not missing on that machine. I believe in the second level appeal, he did go out and check the machine. Yeah, to ensure that the, it was on there. And we do get multiple calls.
The day I had my hearing, the machine was missing.
Okay, we're not, we're not going to get into an argument. It's not a court of law.
I, oh, to address, we do get multiple phone calls about our machines, and that's why we have other ways to purchase permits. And yes, our phone number is listed on there to call us.
Anyone else from the board?
I just, a little clarification, again, on the process. So there's the deal you make, students or whomever has gotten a ticket for, now it's four dollars, right? So, when does that contact happen? There was there, I think it was Christina, has that explained to us the last time she was here, and a little bit now? That there was, it seemed to be a huge lag between contacts that she attempted to make and responses she was getting. So, when, when do they get that deal? I mean, they get a ticket, then what happens? I mean, does she come directly to the police department here, or how does that work?
So when they receive the ticket, a letter is mailed out to them as well at their residence. And if they want to appeal, they have twenty-one days to do that. So once they have the, they appeal it within those twenty-one days, then it starts the calendar over again, and it's fifteen days.
And it's fifteen days on top of that. They do receive a letter in the mail to the address they provided when they appealed it. They also receive a letter in the mail to the registered owner. That's information we get from DMV. So...
But when is it that they know, hey, you can pay four dollars instead of going through this whole process?
So, once they contest it, they receive a letter in the mail within five to seven business days. That's the longest I've ever had. Usually, it's super quick. And it's also on their website. P-Ticket, the actual citation itself, has information on where to look for your citation information.
Fifteen days or something to get your initial letter that you got a ticket. And then they contest it, and then they get another letter saying, okay, you're contesting it, or you can pay four dollars and forego the rest of the process.
Correct, so they get a citation, they have twenty-one days to contest it, or pay it.
Just also, on the back of the citation, is how to do this information as well. So it's on the citation, and they get a letter in the mail giving them their options: to pay the citation or to appeal it.
Is that the same letter that tells them, or you can pay four dollars?
No.
If, once they contest it.
They, they need to contest the parking ticket in order to get them.
I just want to make sure, real quick, just, we're okay right now. This is under President's report. But some level of discussion with staff is good, but if we're going to do a deeper dive...
Just trying to get an idea of what the process is, which is what we're talking about. I am publishing.
Also, a lot of it, if you look at our website, it's very clear as our processes and the options of what the students have and the visitors on campus.
Thank you.
And one more question, just about, if you're contesting it, do you have guidelines on what is, how you determine whether somebody should have to pay or not? Or is it everybody who contests gets the four-buck deal?
Well, and it depends on what the ticket was for, so, you know, and are there mistakes made? Yes. So, so there are instances where we dismiss it, and it's typically in the interest of justice. We have some people come in, and they have certain reasons why. Maybe they had a handicap plaque, or they didn't have it up, that sort of thing. So yes, we do dismiss.
We can do a deeper dive on this and bring it back. It is future agenda item. We're good right now, but do I, anything else from the board? I know Christina, you would love to speak and come up. I gave you the opportunity, but I do want to keep the meeting rolling.
I'll come back at another time, but I would like to leave copies of the bill, the outline, the process, state of California.
Please do. You can leave them with Catherine and Chief. Do you have anything else?
No, and there, we also have lists of the California vehicle code, et cetera, on our website as well, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Christina. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Jasmine. We good? Alright. Sorry, guys, I just want to make sure we're...
So Catherine? Make sure that this, so my President's report gets posted, and it's, there's a PDF of this with this agenda item on. And the information that was staff reported on, I think we, I think they provided more depth. But that's, we're okay. I think that we didn't get into, you know, a further piece here, so I'm feeling alright on it.
Okay. Thank you. Alright, consent calendar. This is item nine. Do I have anything wishing to be polled from the consent calendar? Hello, trustees? Nothing?
Yeah, I'll do it again. Move to approve the consent calendar.
Motion by trustee Dodd. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by trustee Rios. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent calendar passes. Thank you. Next, we are on to item ten, academic affairs. Information, this is ten point one, curriculum changes. This is an action item. And, do we have a presenter on this one? No.
No, just, if you have a first or a second.
Do I have...
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Rios, and a second by trustee Baker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries unanimous. Next, ten point two, this is resolution nineteen to thirteen, one-time waiver of bond requirement for sabbatical leave. This is an action item. Do I have a motion, second? Have a motion by trustee Baldini.
Second.
A second by trustee Baker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries unanimous. And, next, agenda item eleven. This is administrative services. This is eleven point one. This is our housing update.
Yeah, very, very short tonight. If, it looks, I think you have a...
I do have Gary Orton. Gary, would you like to speak? I want to ask that you speak before we go through it.
I'd like to speak after I hear the report. How can I comment on anything unless I hear it?
I understand that, but for the process this evening, and in my rights as board chair, I'm going to ask that you speak before. It's well within my rights as board chair.
I think it's outrageous. Let me just, I'll make this comment.
Is it a comment related to housing update, or?
Absolutely.
Well then, can you wait? Just, go ahead.
You're not going to let me speak after the report.
Right, so go ahead.
Okay, the last item represents a problem this board has. And that is, you deliberate without anything being on the agenda. This occurred in the June meeting, when you had a thirty-eight minute discussion about housing, under President's report. There was nothing on the agenda to indicate that you were going to deliberate or discuss housing at your June meeting. Here, you went on for about twenty minutes about parking. I understand, maybe asked a few questions, but that was a deliberation. You're gathering information. That is the definition of deliberation. You're beginning to form opinions. You're asking questions. I think you need some tutoring about the Brown Act. For one, I felt aggrieved because I was not able to make any comments, to listen to the discussion that you were having at the June meeting. I would have acted a lot sooner if I had known what you were contemplating at that point in time. So that's comment number one. Comment number two, since I'm not going to be allowed to even hear what Dr. Kraft is going to say. You're going to get to deliberate. I can't process and get up and speak to that. So let me just say about, my comment will be about the, your last meeting in September. And that was when the Martin Group gave a report. And at that time, there were recommendations made based on assumptions of eight hundred and seventy-four beds. There's no indication where that ever came about. The, the Scion report found a demand, a student, for student beds of six hundred and twenty-two. And said, well, we've got to cut that down to a sixty percent capture rate to be very conservative. Because the higher the capture rate, means you've got to fill all the beds you're overbuilding. They understood that. And who knows where the Martin Group ever came up with eight hundred and seventy-four beds? Orange Coast College, with three times the enrollment of Napa Valley College, found a demand of eighteen hundred, and cut theirs back to eight hundred. And fourteen, which is less than the recommendation being made by the Martin Group. And I don't know, and the slides that they showed said, and they were going to get a hundred percent of the demand. I'm thinking, why would you ever want to get a hundred percent of the demand? So this tells me, I mean, that was, it was, and it was extremely difficult to process that. And so I recommend that whenever you get a report, you get it in advance, so you can at least have a time to digest it. The audience was given thirty seconds on some of those slides to read the data? Can't make decisions that way. So I don't know if this board saw the slides ahead of time. As somebody who's very familiar with the process that's been going on, and the data, and the studies. It was real difficult to process seeing data come up on a thirty-second slide. So those are my two comments, since I'm not going to be allowed to comment after hearing the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Orton. I do have you for, I also do have you for fifteen point one as well.
Thank you. Not a very detailed report, and I just, a quick couple of points. First, I want to, hats off to faculty for presenting. I really appreciate it. I think, I think it's important and essential that faculty made the points that you did. I mean, I really appreciate Dr. Tejada, I should say. The, first and foremost, I think the point that's, that's critical, that is, faculty's a part of the institution. And their focus is on student success. So having conversations about student success and housing is a perfect thing. Also, I think importantly, you know, having conversations in academic senate, or in further discussions, and talking about the concerns, which are, which are either, sometimes they're misinformation, or not enough information, or legitimate things that we can address and start to look at, which clearly are some of those. Allows us to kind of work those through, so everybody's on the same page. And, and so, we have talked about it. I will schedule some times to have conversations in, either, either in stakeholder meetings, or in the academic senate, or wherever it might. We're just kind of working through some, some spots. I'll talk to the chair about, maybe you come, or maybe you can invite a, another board member to attend that day, so there can be more of a presence. We, to be clear, you know, we're in phase one of feasibility. So we are still just exploring the possibility of housing, and, and that's where we are. So, any estimation of rooms, or beds, or layout, or sites, is still all in feasibility. And that, that was the, the clear message from last time. Where we have gone, at this point, is the environmental study is started. An initial geotechnical study is started. A site civil survey has been discussed and is started. Initial architectural layout for site fit. In other words, looking at the sites at the college that might, might be appropriate for housing. Those are just being looked at, and those, those are in different areas around the college and our property. The only recommendation that we've really received in terms of a solid recommendation is HPI. The Martin Group is recommending the selected architect is HPI, the same one that SRJC and OCC has used. They're, they're well-known in this. And this all will come to the board in a much more formal way next month. But right now, they're just in process, and that's... now, they're just in process, and that's basically where we are. So there's not, not more update than that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kraft. All right, we are moving on. Nothing for 12, 13, 14. This is 14.1, 2018 to 2019 core indicator reports. Dr. Robin Warhol.
Thank you, Catherine. Good evening, board members. I'm here to present the core indicators report tracking our 2018, 2019 performance on five institutional measures. My presentation is structured to cover three general topics. Those are listed here. First, to describe the purpose of the core indicators report, which is local, so it has an internal purpose. Next is to provide context for the institution set standards referenced in the report, and those have an external context, and it is accreditation-driven. And then finally, to highlight some key takeaways for board members as well as the campus community more generally. So the purpose. The core indicators report is part of our system for monitoring institutional performance. It was developed in 2013, 2014, and incorporated into a series of regular reports produced by the college each year. The document included with the board agenda for tonight represents the sixth annual report of its kind. What makes the core indicators report unique is that it includes an evaluation of recent performance against locally established standards. And another attractive feature is that it's in the form of a one-page summary document. So the context for the core indicators report, as I mentioned, particularly the institution set standards in the report, is external, and the need to establish institution set standards is driven primarily by accreditation requirements. As part of the 2013 annual report to the Accrediting Commission for Community and Junior Colleges, the ACCJC, member institutions were asked to identify institution set standards on five indicators, including the successful course completion rate, the fall-to-fall persistence rate, the number of degree and certificate recipients, and the number of transfers to four-year institutions. Those are the indicators that are covered by this report. The institution set standards were intended to define institutional and academic quality, and should performance ever fall below the established standards, then it should trigger some kind of institutional response to explore the issue further, implement strategies to provide additional support for student success and achievement, and improve institutional performance. The core indicators report is designed to help address two accreditation standards, which are noted on the slide. So the first standard is standard 1B3 under academic quality and institutional effectiveness, and it indicates the need to establish institution set standards for student achievement as appropriate to our mission, and assess how well we're achieving those and publishing the information. And the second standard is within 4C, which pertains specifically to the governing board, so standard 4C8 talks about the institution accomplishing its goals for student success, and that you should regularly review key indicators of student learning and achievement, and institutional plans for improving academic quality. So the core indicators report helps address the data or key indicators component of standard 4C8. Not only is the core indicators report shared with the board each year, but it's also shared with the campus community, including the planning and budget committee, as well as the public through our college website. So the structure of the 2018, 2019 core indicators report is that for each institutional performance measure, the report identifies the institution set standard and reports the 2018, 2019 performance level alongside that established standard. The check marks at the bottom of each column indicate that the standards were met last year. The core indicators report also includes some additional drill down or detail associated with each measure. So the drill down includes for successful course completion rate, the rates by different types of courses. For the persistence rate among different subsets of students, the drill down is among students based on their enrollment status, among first-time and continuing students in column two. The number of associate degrees for transfer that were conferred last year, as well as the average time to completion among our 2018, 2019 award recipients, is reported in the box below at the bottom of the third column. And then finally, the number of transfers by institution type is the drill down for the fourth column. So key takeaways or talking points that the board might consider? So we're monitoring institutional performance as part of our practices associated with institutional effectiveness. We do this every year. MVC last year increased the locally established standards for all except for one of the measures, and that was the standard for successful course completion remained the same as the level originally established in 2013. If this sounds familiar, it might be because you approved these standards at your May meeting earlier this year. We exceeded all institution standards, institution set standards last year, and that includes all of them that had the baseline lifted in terms of the institution set standard. The percentages noted at the bottom of this slide represent the amount by which the 2018, 2019 performance exceeded each of the standards. And the report is posted on the college website, as well as board docs, and it can be shared with your constituents. I'm happy to answer any questions.
One question. Thank you very much. Very good talking points, especially at the end. And in terms of getting the numbers from transfers from in-state private and out-of-state private, when would those be forthcoming, and how come we have a delay?
You know, it's beyond our control. It's basically, the reason we, we didn't include them in the metrics for the, when we established the institution set standards, is that there is a lag. The chancellor's office is the one that reports this through the student matching, and they prioritize the, actually, CSU and UC generate it for us, so you can go to their data marts, et cetera, and get the information from the most recent year. There is a lag. It tends to be sometime between now and March, I think, when the in-state private and out-of-state are reported, but it just takes a little more time.
I wanted to ask if you could go to the last slide?
Oop.
Oops, there we go. The, the amount of certificate recipients is so high above what you set, institution sets record. I was wondering if, if you knew why maybe that perhaps happened? Was there a certain certificate program that unexpectedly attracted more, or are you, are you just gonna reset that standard because you're off, or what was the thinking?
So we, this is based on the updated standards that we established last year. There is fluctuation from year to year. I, I will say that in my review of the data about the types of certificates that we've been conferring that's in this, that are, that's reported here, it does include some of the general IGETC for transfer certificates, and I think that those are very popular as having at least some, you know, tangible proof of work accomplished here.
Okay. Is that something you wanna see continue and, and maybe put your institution set standard higher for next time, or are you just gonna wait? Is it a wait-and-see kinda thing? Cause it will roll.
I think it's kinda wait-and-see. So, so these were required for the first time in 2013, so we established them as part of an effective practice, right? We wanted to, we monitor them regularly first, and then we will periodically revisit them and see if they need to be adjusted based on recent performance. Since we did that last year, I don't think there's any urgency, and I don't wanna, you know, react and then increase it too much without seeing. I think some of the discussions that came out of this process from last year included some concerns about declining enrollments. How are we gonna increase the output on these with, if we have fewer students here? But then, you know, the context of some of the improvements that are even in progress now or looming on the horizon even more, you know, AB 705 should help with this. Guided pathways, absolutely, but in the interim, there might be a few, you know, growing pains in terms of getting from point A to point B.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? Robin, as our Dr. Warhol, as always, well in-depth and good job institution, good job MVC, and stay up here because you're next too, right?
Yeah, I was gonna say, you're not getting ready for me so soon. Let's see here. I just have to find where it is. Alrighty. So I am very pleased to bring this item before you for action tonight, and MVC's midterm report is due to the Accrediting Commission for Community and Junior Colleges, that's the ACCJC, by October 15th. That's next Tuesday, or this Tuesday, depending on how you look at it. So this slide describes the requirements of a midterm report. As outlined here, a midterm report is required of all member institutions, and it's due three to four years into the seven-year accreditation cycle. MVC's report was drafted through a focused exercise intended to address the nine requirements of a midterm report, which are listed here. MVC's October 2019 midterm report reflects work being done regularly across the college as part of our standard practices to ensure academic quality, institutional effectiveness, and continuous improvement. The midterm report describes improvements implemented since 2015, and conveys our intentions to continue these efforts to promote student success and institutional effectiveness. The midterm report was shared with the campus community via, via an internal website, which required MVC credentials to access. The report, as well as all associated evidence, were posted, and members of the campus community were offered the opportunity to provide comments and suggestions. The midterm report has been on the agenda for recent meetings of the Council of Presidents and the Planning and Budget Committee, and the signatures of constituent group presidents, Dr. Kraft as college superintendent and president, and myself as accreditation liaison officer, were collected on the certification page last month. The president's office will collect board chair trustee Iverson's signature following your action this evening. There are more than 140 pieces of evidence provided in support of our midterm report, so this satisfies the expectation the reports be evidence-heavy. The midterm report is intended to be a very focused exercise, as I mentioned before, and ACCJC staff has indicated that these reports should be 20 to 30 pages, so that's the narrative light expectation for reports to the commission. I'm sorry to report that we didn't quite meet the length expectation, as our report spans 39 pages. However, I think that's a testament to the amount of work and the number of improvement efforts that are underway here at the college. Also, the list of evidence spans four pages just by itself, and there's a, you know, cover page and a certification page and table of contents, the non-content-driven parts. So I think we're well-positioned for our 2022 comprehensive evaluation. We just need to continue the great work that we're already doing. Earlier today, I completed the final review of the midterm report and the evidence that will be sent to the ACCJC, including the checking of all the numbering of all the pieces of evidence. And I made a few minor refinements, just kinda some editing details and consistency of file names. Oh, I'm having my picture taken. Hi, Holly. Let's see, adding a few clarifications in terms of parenthetical explanations, and removing some highlights, kinda things of that nature, some like, yellow highlights. So the plan is to post the final version of the midterm report on the accreditation portion of the college website next week. I have a timeline to share with you, moving forward and particularly, well, actually just for the remainder of this academic year. So we are required to send a flash drive containing the report and all associated evidence to the ACCJC by October 15th. I'm planning to mail the materials out tomorrow. Yay. The commission will take action on MVC's report at its meeting in January, and that's scheduled for January 15th through 17th. The college will receive notification of the commission's action within 30 days of that meeting, and so I would anticipate receipt of that letter in early to mid-February. The notification, as indicated here, the notification for midterm reports typically indicates that the commission reviewed and accepted the midterm report, and then identifies the timing of our next comprehensive evaluation, so just wanna prepare you for that if it seems anticlimactic at all. In the spirit of MVC's effective and promising practices, as well as the accreditation expectations for continuing, continuous improvement, I anticipate that we will officially launch our preparation for the 2022 comprehensive evaluation and site visit later in the spring. So we'll have five minutes to celebrate, and then we'll move on to the next step. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about our 2019 accreditation midterm report.
You put it on paper beautifully. Thank you for, for that concise report.
I was just gonna say, one of the tricks I learned in college, and I'm sure your students do too, is to play with fonts when you need to change how, the size of your paper.
It's an action item.
Uh, sorry.
Second.
So climatic, you guys, come on. I have a motion by Dr. Baldi, or trustee Baldini, sorry. It was, it was the tie and...
I was gonna say, for my board report, but thank you.
Motion for approval by trustee Baldini, a second by trustee Segura. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries unanimous.
And we'll, we'll celebrate with you those five minutes before you go on to the next one.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
Thank you. All right. Next, we are moving to item 15.1. This is our board policy review and adoption. This is second reading. Board policies, BP 5015 and 7700. Mr. Orton, I have your card on this. Again, I'm gonna ask that you, did he, are you there? Come up and speak. I have your speaker card on it.
Again, I assume there's no, there's no report. This is kinda backwards. The proponent normally goes first, then if there's any...
That, that's what we were doing in the past, but that's not what we're doing this evening.
I see. Okay. Actually, this started about 18 months ago when I requested that you review BP 7700. It's finally come forward. The reason I asked it to be reviewed is that it was missing a couple of elements of the rights of employees. The current policy supposedly gives the right to employees to report unlawful activities and be protected from that type of whistleblowing. The statute, which is actually entitled, "The reporting by community college employees of improper governmental activities," is broader than merely unlawful activities. It defines improper governmental activities as to meaning an activity by a community college or by an employee that is undertaken in the performance of the employee's official duties of the following descriptions. One, if the activity violates state law. And two, the activity is economically wasteful or involves gross misconduct, incompetency, or inefficiency. It also defines as a protected disclosure, not only the two elements I just stated of improper governmental activity, but any condition that may significantly threaten the health or safety of employees or the public. So any of those three categories, an employee is protected if the employee reports that in good faith. So I thought it would be important not to give employees a misconception that the only thing they can do is report an unlawful activity. They can report those other things, waste, inefficiencies, gross inefficiencies, and safety problems. But that might be a good idea. But that might be a good idea. It came back. Uh, the other, the other thing that I had requested is that not only does the state law give the employee the right to report those types of, uh, activities, but it also gives the employee the right to report it to an administrator, any trustee, and to the state chancellor. I thought that was kind of important to put in there, too. So, this, it's come back, and it still is just unlawful activities, uh, it, it's just unlawful activities. It's just a little broader, because you say also that includes anything against board policy, but it doesn't, it's not as broad as the state entitlement that employees actually have. And it's real easy to say that. Let me just read you the first sentence of the whistleblower policy of the Napa Valley Unified School District. An employee shall have the right to disclose to a board member, and there, by the way, their statute, this was, the one I was referring to was for community colleges, but the exact same statute was applied to schools, and then they changed around some of the, some of the things who you can report it to. Employee shall have the right to disclose to a board member, a school administrator, a member of the County Board of Education, County Superintendent of Schools, or the Superintendent of Public Instruction, any improper governmental activity by the district or a district employee that violates state or federal law is economically wasteful or involves gross misconduct, incompetency, or inefficiency. One sentence, and they capture it all, of what the rights are, except for the safety thing, but that's, yeah, perhaps included in some of those others. So, I thought it was kind of straightforward to ask that, but have met resistance, for some reason, not to include those other elements. I, I don't understand why. Maybe that will help strengthen the need for better, you know, for, for employees to have good unions. Maybe their unions can tell them what their rights are, because I guess the college isn't gonna tell them what all their rights are. That doesn't make any sense to me. So, I'd really like, do, if you do nothing else, at the bottom of that board policy, BP seventy-seven hundred, you quote the statute. You quote, you quote the, uh, Education Code. Maybe you ought to just give them a clue by including the title of that statute. And the title, the legislature was real, real careful, alright? If, if the first, the first, uh, eighty-seven-one-sixty, this is one sentence in section eighty-seven-one-sixty. This article shall be known and may be referred to as the Reporting by Community College Employees of Improper Governmental Activities Act. So, you might just want to put the name of the act after the code citation. If anybody's curious, then they'll have to use their own wiles to go look up the statute. I don't know why you don't, don't put in, in your board policy what the statute really says and make them go look it up. If that's what you want to do, and help strengthen the unions and the need for unions, be my guest.
Thank you, Mr. Orton. Okay. This, we also have our fifty fifteen. This is an action item. Do I have a motion?
Are we voting independently of fifty fifteen first?
We can break them up, or we can put them together?
I think we need to talk about, um, the whistleblower one.
Okay. Uh, well, we can break them up. So, let's do BP...
I move approval of BP fifty fifteen.
I'll second.
So, I have a motion by Trustee Rios and a second by Trustee Goff on BP fifty fifteen. This is the residency determination. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries unanimous. Now, we have BP seventy-seven hundred whistleblower protection policy. It is an action item, so...
I, I just wanted to make comment. Oh, sorry.
Yeah. So, I have a motion by Trustee Baldini. Do I have a, or, do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second by Trustee Baker. Open for discussion.
Yeah, I, I, I think Mr. Orton makes a really good point, um, especially in the climate we are living in. Where it says regarding the reporting and investigation of suspected unlawful activities, why aren't we including every, every type of thing that, that the state entitles? Why aren't we referring to wasteful, um, actions and, I'm not gonna quote it right, puts, um, actions that put the entity at risk? Why, why is that not in there? Why didn't we just take it right off the state? I, I lost the word, the statute. Thank you. Why, why didn't we do that?
And if I, yeah, Trustee Goff, if I could just piggyback off, I mean, just looking at the language as it is, and maybe we just talk about it, and Dr. Kraft, if you have any comments, too, but when you're talking about the definition of unlawful activity, you're making a specific reference to something that violates state law. So, implicitly, or explicitly, it does include that statute.
Oh, it does?
Well, it does, it does, but I think in light of transparency and wanting to, you know, make those concerns, now we, hopefully, someone, a layperson, doesn't have to go digging through a, a huge codebook to, to find out what, what exactly state law applies, uh, in, in terms of those protections.
And, and I'm assuming that's why Mr. Orton mentioned listing the statute on the, on the board policy. Is that, is that correct?
It is currently listed on the, on the policy at the bottom.
At the bottom?
And once we move the policies to Board Docs, which is currently underway, it should be another week, maybe, then the, you will just click on the link and it'll open up the code, ed code for you.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
And this has gone through legal review. It has gone through the CCLC template. Uh, we, in addition, do have our AP seventy-seven hundred whistleblower protection, which also has whistleblower contact information directing anyone coming forward to.
Well, I, I guess it goes down to, if I was in that position, if I worked here and, and I saw something that I thought put the entity at risk, and I went to this, I may not think that this applies to me. Because I'm not a lawyer, I'm not, you know, even if it has a stat, I think that's my concern. I think it, it's mainly about being really transparent about what this really, what's the purpose of it? Does that make sense?
Yeah, there's, there's a couple, yes, you're right. I mean, many of the policies refer to ed code, title. I mean, they're, they can be complicated. Part of what, um, we've anticipated in doing this, this, um, this requires training and, you know, kind of transparency throughout the organization. So, Human Resources Training and Development is also gonna structure some trainings around this.
Okay.
Um, for people. It's included in the onboarding process, et cetera. We did do the AP, which has, um, got some of the elements that, you know, our speaker talked about to include.
Okay.
Um, and also, I've directed Human Resources on one of the pages, I'm trying to remember which page it was, to make sure that the, a broader contact list, if, if you suspect blah blah, here it is, and, and it's got a whole list of folks to go to. I think, and then in the AP itself, it's got a very specific trail for you to follow, should you suspect something. Um, in our, in our research of improper, um, to the point, it, there's a, I think there's six or seven only colleges in the state that use the term. And the CCLC fell to that, that referring to ed code and, and, uh, using the word unlawful was, is what they're recommending for all the colleges. So, we're just, we're following along with the CCLC's recommendation in our legal counsel.
They're just, I, I don't know what their motivation is for that. It just, it just seems that, I don't know. As, as a non-lawyer employee type, I just look at this and think, you know, Mr. Orton has a point. Why isn't it just using the language of, of the statute for clarity? That's, I'm just wondering.
No, I understand. I think it falls to us to train.
I, I guess, one, my, I guess one concern is, are we gonna recite the entire statute? Uh, every statute of, uh, you know, that we refer to in BP's? I, I think I understood Catherine to say that the title will be there and the link to the actual ed code will be there. Is that right?
Yes.
It's currently on the policy. If, I can open it if you want. Oops, wrong one, sorry.
Too fast.
This one.
I mean, just, we've been working on this for, I mean, over a year now. I mean, it's gone through legal, it's gone through all the proper channels and...
Okay, so all our policies have references here. Here's the ed code that we're referring to. There's, uh, this one was added by the CCLC in red here. And so, what will happen when we move over to Board Docs? All of these will be links that are, that are live. You can go straight to the, the code itself.
Is that the plan for all of our policies? Because I've noticed that that's not the case right now.
Uh, the, well, they're all being migrated over to Board Docs. And I think all of them do have references unless...
They have the references, but not the link.
No, they don't have links right now. Uh, that's just something new that Board Docs offers. And so, we're busy creating those links right now. And, and Board Docs, uh, I think they've, they've moved them all over. We're now just checking each one, and we should be able to go live in a week or two.
Great. And when that happens, are we going to take away the page on the district page so that we don't have to duplicate?
Yeah, that's the goal, so...
Yeah, Board Docs is a much robust, much more robust site, and, and I think will be an easier thing, actually more available for the public to look at as well.
Trustee Baldini, anything? Do I have any other comments, discussions? I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimous. Okay. Next is Board Reports. This is Subject sixteen point one, Standing Committee and Other Appointment Reports. It's, uh, District Auxiliary Services. We have not met recently, have we?
We did. You were, you were unable to make that meeting, but I can, um...
Line that one up with the last board meeting. Okay.
Yeah. I'm, I'm looking at, uh, anything that we, we had a Treasurers Report for the Quarter Financials, and, uh, we approved the Quarterly Financials. We also did a, um, an in-kind donation budget, small adjustment. We, we looked at, um, that's it. That's it. And, um, our next meeting is on twelve-ten.
You, DWT, Trustee Segura.
Committee met in August, and I'm not really sure when our next meeting is. Is it, it's also November or December? Because it's in a quarterly.
I don't have that report.
So, I'm sorry, we'll be meeting in the, shortly in the future. I'm not exactly when the next meeting is.
Are you looking right now?
I was trying to find it, but I'm not sure. Uh, go ahead, and if I can dig it up, I will.
Legislative Affairs Committee. And Audit and Finance Committee. That was recent.
We met previous to the last meeting, but...
And Rural Property Committee.
We have not met, and we don't have anything scheduled.
And McPherson's distinguished. Okay. Future Agenda Item Request. This is sixteen point two. Has everyone looked at this? Do we want to bring back parking? Go deeper dive? There's some conversation on that tonight?
I think it would be nice to... Well, I don't know if it needs to be a, an agendized item. It may be just like a follow-up report on kind of how the information is. I know it's on the website, but it still feels like it's confusing to me. And so, I don't know, maybe it's just because there's been a change in the way things have been done, and so that maybe that information hasn't trickled out yet.
I, I think if, to the point earlier, I think you were fine tonight. Um, it's agendized. My report has, um, the basis of what we talked about, and I think you were inquiring. But I think if you're gonna get into deliberations about changes and thinking about it, it needs to be agendized as a, as an info item at least, or maybe an action item if you wanted a change.
Well, I think, I think if, if the, um, if the process is already there and the process is working, it's fine. Uh, but just, I think just for the people who are parking their cars and, and getting these tickets, that they are fully understanding what their options are and what, what the college's options are to making certain that that happens.
Oscar, you have a, a thought process? What, how would you like to proceed?
I, I think it's a good idea to, if you'd like, to bring it back for full discussion, and then perhaps, uh, reiterate what the process is, and again, follow the flow, see if it does make sense, uh, because it needs to make sense to some and, and to others. So, I think it's, it's reasonable to bring it back again and have a full, full comprehensive discussion of it. And then perhaps when there, there may be some suggestions.
Is that okay with you, Board? As chair?
Fair enough.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Uh, smoking policy.
Yes.
I'm not gonna win that one down, am I?
Says in prog, in process.
Process. I know we've discussed it a little bit, and...
Well, our smoking policy would be, the way to do this, then...
Vaping and all that stuff, too?
Well, would, is exactly this. Have the discussion here. Talk about some suggested things you would like or not have in it, and then take it to the Council of Presidents, work it through that direction, and then, and then it will come back here, again, as a first read again and through that, through that process. But it, it's a good place, place to start, so you can initialize that. And we can also start, start the conversation in the Council of Presidents as well.
Okay. Uh, and then the, I mean, pull for public use. Everyone else is good with these whistleblower protection. We can take off. Uh, information.
The, since, since Trustee Rios brought up the, the bottle ban, and we're discussing kind of just in general, kind of eco-friendly stuff, it would be... I know from a previous discussion that, regarding a bill from Ben and Sherry's, that we have composting options on, on campus, but I don't ever see compost trash cans. And I know like, every NVSD building, there are multiple places to compost. So, if you've got the trash, you've got the recycling, and you've got compost. So, I'm just wondering, is that something we could invest in as well?
That's gonna be a facilities, I think, issue as well, right, Bob? I don't have a good answer.
And so, we can, we can certainly bring that back. We actually do have composting trash cans. They tend to be primarily in food areas, exactly.
If we could, though, I think it'd be nice to separate those two subjects, because we're talking about facilities and plastic. I mean, I, I love the idea, too, but sometimes, when we talked about opening up the athletic program, it got, the scope of the discussion got way too big for us to really, like, narrow down on, um, so...
And is the intent, well, let me do, let me just kind of ask, the intent of the plastic bottle, are we talking about that one right now, right?
Uh, yeah.
Is, is your intent to talk about...
I think it's a separate, separate item.
It was just, it was just kind of a segue.
I think that's something that kind of goes hand in hand, but I think they're two separate issues. Water bill, water bottle filling stations, I mean, I don't know what the cost is on those, or if how easy it is.
Very reasonable, and we have a couple, right, already, Oscar?
Yes, well, Bob, yes, there's two. There's one in the thirteen-hundred building and there's one in the PE department area.
Right, right, in the ground floor of the gymnasium, the six-hundred building, right outside of the dance studios. And we're exploring adding more on campus. The, um, for example, the, the, uh, water fountains in this building lend themselves to replacing one of them with a water bottle filling station. So, um, we are exploring options to place more water bottle filling stations, uh, around campus.
Totally random, but over in this direction, there is a very unique drinking fountain on the top of a planner box.
Yes.
Does anyone know which one I'm talking about?
No. These are ancient.
Yeah. I don't know if those are ones that we could easily update into, but, I mean, do we even have, is that usable?
Is this something we should be discussing now, or will we actually bring this up in the agenda?
It's aesthetically beautiful.
It's art, I guess, right?
Aesthetically and historically.
Can we, so I can be clear, I mean, can we, what, what, besides plastic bottle ban, is there a better term for something?
Water filling stations.
Water filling stations.
I don't think we need to bring a, uh, we can just do this, right? I mean, I don't need your direction to do it.
Why don't we just do like, uh, could we do a facilities update on?
Yes.
Just the receptacles, the recycling, and compost.
Facilities report on green, green movement.
Facilities report on green, green movement.
What is our green policy? Does that make it more specific?
That does, and we can get into it.
But, but I actually wanted a ban in this room.
I thought we were talking about.
Well, because that's our, this is our area.
I mean, right here, one, two, three, four.
Same bottle as last month.
Can we invoke policy on this room right now? Is that possible?
We did good from last time.
We already did.
Well, joking aside, I mean, it is, you talk about cities in San Francisco, they're taking these very seriously. I mean, plastic is very, maybe talk about sustainability issue. I mean, I would be very happy to discuss talking about a ban throughout campus and so impacting what we sell in the cafe, vending machines, so on and so forth. I mean, this is something I think that we really could, um, take a really positive stand on in terms of the campus sustainability.
I'm all for it too, I think.
Do we, but from.
We're good. Let me, sustainability is a good topic. We'll review, we'll talk about it in Cabinet and see if we can bundle it up and bring it in so it makes sense to you all, you know, in terms of what, what we're trying to do.
What would that look like though, if we were to, I mean?
You would pass, um, you would discuss during that information item, we would gather kind of the Board's will, you know, like, kind of like you're doing, but you're not doing right now. In the, in the future, we would discuss that, gather those things, try to craft if we could then, using best policies from other places, something that felt right. Come, take it through Council of Presidents, who would then also, you know, beat it up, so to speak, and, and everybody'd have their way with it. Bring it back to you for a first read, and then you could start the process, right? And, but it's our job, so it doesn't come to you rough and raw on the first read. It makes some sense.
That's, yeah, that's the large, broader scope.
It is.
Can we pass our ban in this room?
Can we do that right now?
Next time?
No.
No?
You can't do that right now, no.
Well, no, I said next time, not now.
Now, you, I don't think you, let me think about it for a moment.
Dr. Krav, I'm sorry, just to be, it's a little serious, I'm getting back to this. But in, in terms of gauging interest of the topic, in terms of stakeholder groups, I would love to have associate students be involved in that discussion as well.
Absolutely.
Just to be clear.
And Pablo and I have already talked a bit about this as well, as far as Christopher as well, so.
And I'm sure Faculty Association and Academic Senate would weigh in too, right, on these ones?
Yep.
All right.
I've, I've got some ideas for us that it will work. Don't we, Bob? Right? We'll come back with this.
I, as your fearless Board Chair, will keep it going. All right.
I have a couple of things.
I'm sorry, I do.
Future agenda items? Shoot, let's just go this way.
I remember Trustee Baker had something regarding the pool and public use of the pool.
That's right.
Was it on there?
It's on there.
Oh, thank you. Man, I saw it the first time. I was like, where did it go?
I'll stir it around a little bit, okay?
Yeah, thanks. But I did also want to talk about, what are we talking about with respect to athletic participation in terms of our teams and what kind of interests we're, we're generating there?
That's gonna be, we can do that as a, as kind of an, uh, sports team update, kind of we did it last year. We can bring in how they're looking.
I think in the past, we've always kind of like, it's been unapplauded on GPA and how many students are taking course loads. Could we do a little different this time?
That's a year-end report that comes, that comes up. I think what Trustee.
Well, I just, in the last time that we did speak, and I'm really sorry to blame for this, this topic. We talked about last semester, I believe, all these measures that the athletics program was taking in terms of generating more turnout. So we'd have a softball team, so we'd have, I'm trying to think of other teams that we haven't had enough volleyball largely, you know, these, these sports that have just kind of slowly disappeared, and most of those have been targeted on, on women's sports.
You know what we can do then to, it sounds to me like the Board is wanting to kind of reinstitute the kind of reports that we used to do. And we got away from those, but under the Vice Presidents, basically you're talking about Cabinet reports. So Fay would report on, on sports in a way that made some sense, you know, talking to her dean.
And you suggested that last time.
Yeah, I think that's the way we go. So maybe it, it will take some more time in Board Meetings a little bit. But if we keep those things crisp, so that, that section used to be an hour, the President's Report. But I think we do it short and sweet, and I can work with, with folks to expand it a little bit. So it's a max ten-minute something, or whatever it might be. But otherwise, you end up stacking these, these agenda items way downstream, so it takes a long time to get at them. So we'll, we'll talk about this at Cabinet. I think we can get at what, exactly what you're like. Is that okay?
Uh, Trustee and Board Re, Board Chair Reports. What, what, what? Future Agenda Item Request? Okay. Trustee Rio? Okay, down here. Pablo? I think the goal is to keep the list short, but really we wanna.
I have a couple of things I wanted to.
I think we're on the shoot.
Well, first I wanted to confirm that the status of the Campus Technology Report that was asked about last month is going to address Wi-Fi, because it's come up a couple of times since. And also, I wondered if, one of the things that we had talked about when we talked about our Board Goals was possibly having a joint meeting of the various educated, education-related boards in the county. I just wanted to see if we could get that ball rolling, since it'll probably take a long hill to get it there.
I have, I have spoken with Barb Nimko already, and so she's trying to, she hasn't returned yet. We haven't gotten back to that conversation.
Great, cool. And then the last thing I wanted, I don't know if it's really an agenda item, since I know it's something that, that you're, you brought up in your President's Report, is just about the whole power-out thing and kind of, and this, this happened to NVSD too, is like, we just, we're not prepared for this. And so just, you know, I want to just kind of get some idea of what the Board's role might be in that process of having a plan, because we just don't have one.
And I, I think, I mean, it's all good discussion, and these are good points, and I'd love to get it all done in one meeting. I don't know if that's gonna happen. But one of the things that was of gravest concern to me was the fact, when I was thinking about the college staying open, it was like, this is a good thing. We're gonna have people that are not able to have power charging at home, and they're gonna be leaving, so they're gonna be coming in the campus. But the fact that we had so many students here, what the Wi-Fi is a concern that I have, so.
I believe November we're doing, yeah, November is, it says in process, but the status of Campus Technology is coming in November Board Meeting.
Okay.
Am I able to say something? Can I say something? I would just also like to say that if there's a way that you guys could also, I mean, discuss, but also prioritize Wi-Fi on campus, because there's various groups and various departments that are, that are having issues with it, including students. Students all the time are always saying that they're having a hard time connecting to Wi-Fi in their classrooms. And any way that ASNVC can assist in like promoting or helping out the sports team to get a bigger turnout, I mean, we're more than happy to. You know, I've, I've suggested trying to create like a football team or something, but they're saying it's very expensive. But, I mean, any way that we can, we can try to help out, I mean, we're, I mean, we're here. Thank you.
Starts with communication, what we're doing. So, that said, are we moving past? Are we ready? All right. Sixteen point three, Trustee and Board Chair Reports. Pablo, you've been very quiet this evening, so let's start with you.
Sure thing. Yeah, so I do have a very limited Board Report. I mean, this past few weeks, I've just been kind of dealing with the, I don't know, the not burden, but I do have a lot of things on my plate in terms of academics, all my class loads. So that's been taking up a lot of my time. I've been meeting with a variety of student groups on campus. I spoke last week at the Mesa Orientation. So I was able to speak to a large number of first-time students that are seeking resources here on campus. And so I was really glad to meet a lot of them. And here's some of the concerns that they had. Some need just extra assistance. Some don't know about the resources that are here on campus. So, just like you're saying, communication is really key, just to let everybody know that there are multiple resources here on campus. And so it was a good experience for me. I really liked that. But other than that, I guess next week is going to be the STEM Picnic Day. And that's gonna be actually on Thursday at twelve PM. And I would invite anybody from the community, anyone from the Board, feel free to attend that. That'll be at twelve PM in front of the Life Sciences Building. That's right near the library. This is the seventeenth Thursday of October.
Thank you. Trustee Baldini. Dr. Baldini?
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, no, that's, that's right. That's still another consideration of the Academic Senate. However, what Dr. Tejada said was, took some gray matter upstairs. And Dr. Walnall, Wornell had done a report back in May of two thousand and three about the ebbs and flows of student enrollment. So it's kind of interesting to back up what she was saying. There was, we, just as a matter of fact, in fall of ninety-one, we were at roughly seventy-four hundred full-time equivalent students, and that, that dropped down in fall of ninety-five to fifty-six fifty. But in two thousand and two, fall of two thousand and two, we were up to seventy-five hundred. So it has certainly in that decade bounced around considerably as far as student enrollment, and if you overlay recessions and so on and so forth. But, yeah, that's exactly what you were saying. And Nothing Else Report.
Trustee Baker?
Nothing really. I went to the Police Academy. And also I got wind of the costume sale. I forget where from. But I came for the costume, used costume sale, and now I have a trunk full of used costumes that I've been giving a ride for a couple of weeks. So give them another couple of weeks, and I'll eventually get them into the house. That's all I have.
Trustee Dodd?
Nothing to report. I mean, I guess, significantly, I've been out of town, as I've told a few of you for the past three weeks or so. But I know Trustee Segura is gonna talk a little bit about the Ten Thousand Degrees, which is a recently started organization here in Napa, originally from Marin. It's got some base in Marin County as well. And really, the, the goal is, is taking really hard-working students from the high school level, making sure that they're able to not only succeed at the high school level, but go on to transfer, whether or not it's a four-year or a two-year education, but working not only from the high school level and ensuring kind of high school success, but then going on and, and, and serving as mentors at the college level as well, the secondary education level. So it's, it's kind of a really unique model. And, and once those students graduate from, you know, from college, they basically provide opportunities for mentorship, so they can kind of be the mentor and kind of start that whole cyclical program of mentoring those high school students and taking them. But the cool part about it is not only just tracking it through high school, but then also tracking and, and staying real active and maintaining relationships through, through the college and ensuring the student's success at the college level.
Thank you.
I really don't have a report.
Trustee Rios?
I just wanted to congratulate the, the Police Academy graduates. It's always so fun going to that graduation. It's one of my favorite things. I also was really excited to hear that Diana and Fay was, were coming to ACHS to do a CCAP meeting. And NBC was partnering with us to do a job fair, and they were both supposed to be yesterday, and we were closed. So they were both canceled, which was really disappointing. So I'm working with Dr. Tennyson to reschedule the job fair, and I'm hoping to work with our principal to reschedule the CCAP meeting, and we can get that done. But it's very exciting. There's a very good feeling about NBC down in American Canyon at the moment. People are excited about what they're seeing, and, and I just hope that continues. I want to commend the counseling staff that works down there. They work really hard on behalf of the students, and they are wonderful about contacting them and meeting with them and speaking to them in such a way that our students are really understanding how to be successful at NBC. And I just, I've never thanked them publicly, and I wanted to do that tonight. So thank you very much to both of them.
Very nice. Thank you. Trustee Segura?
I wanted to thank the District for getting me to the Haku Conference and for letting me in the Haku Conference. It was, it was a great experience. I think they were saying that it was, it, it's record assistance, close to two thousand people. And that included, I think, over eight hundred students. I got to go to one of the adelante functions, and the energy in the room was, was wonderful. And it was good to see that it was not only, what are, what are we being called, the question? Were we Latinx, Latin, Hispanic, Mexican? But it wasn't only that. It was very diversified. It was very, very nice to see that it wasn't only, you know, Latinx or Latinos.
I'm sorry, you said, what was it called? Could you explain what it was? What?
Haku, the Hispanic Association of Colleges and Universities.
Okay.
In Chicago. Thank you. Sorry for that. There was a lot of this. I attended three sessions. One of the sessions was on how to help the students through the pipeline in a smoother and, in a smoother way, and not letting them fall through the cracks. And it, during their research on, on how to do so, you know, they were saying when students come in either to a junior college or a university, and they choose their, their careers, career paths, they end up dropping out because the classes weren't what they were hoping for, or. And so changing into the STEM programs helped them a lot. And I heard the word STEM in all three sessions that I attended. So, you know, that is, and I read what you, you know, about the STEM and the Mesa programs. And, and it's been accentuated all over the state. Also, the LA Districts are doing a lot of assistance in helping the students with the housing, with the food banks, with. And it was really interesting, because they're saying, a lot of them are doing, forming partnerships with hotels that are near the universities or the colleges. You know, we have so many homeless students. How many rooms do you have that weren't used? And so that's, that's how they're helping the student homelessness problem. So it was very enlightening. And, and like I said, I couldn't understand why Southern California was very well represented, but Haku is there. And so, we're students from all over the state. I did get a chance to take in some culture. I visited the Institute of Art, which was about two blocks away from the hotel. So it was very nice. Very sad to see a lot of people asking for money in the streets. And the Uber drivers were saying, you know, how expensive it was getting to be living in Chicago. And people were just moving away from Chicago and making the commute and creating traffic masses. So thanks again for allowing me to go there. And yesterday, at the Progressive Women's Event, I met this wonderful young lady who is the Executive Director for Ten Thousand Degrees. And she was telling me what they were doing with, with the students. And they are not mentors. They are fellows. So that's why they're calling them fellows, that follow students throughout their career until they graduate, either the, the university or wherever they may be graduating from. So I thought that was very, very wonderful.
You've been busy. Thank you.
It was very nice after harvest. It was nice to go to Chicago. Totally different, so.
Hopefully Harvest went well.
It did. Harvest was Harvest.
I don't really have much to report. My schedule's changed, so I'm still adjusting to having to work on weekends now and having two days off in the middle of the week. So I apologize if I haven't been on campus as much as I'd like. I do wanna thank Dr. Tejada and Christie for your comments this evening. And I feel really good about this Board. It's a very active Board, but also this District and the direction we're all going. So with that, I think we're gonna adjourn at seven. So with that, I think we're gonna adjourn at 7:48? Oh, I must announce future Board Meetings. Our next Board Meeting will be our regular Board Meeting in November 14th, 2019. Anything else? Closed session?